We're ready to go live, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Welcome to the regular meeting of the San Rafael City Council of Monday, May 4th, 2020. Request the roll call from the city clerk of attendance.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy?
Aye.
Vice Mayor?
No, present, sorry.
Vice Mayor?
You know what I mean.
Present.
Councilmember Gamblin?
Present.
Councilmember McCullough?
Present.
Mayor Phillips?
Present, all accounted for. This meeting is being streamlined live on YouTube. We have community members attending via conference call on the following phone number, 669-900-9128, and the meeting ID number is 897-7202-3202. The council met in closed session. I'll ask the city attorney if there's any reportable action.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No reportable action was taken in closed session.
Thank you for that. I'll invite the city clerk to address how public comment will work this evening.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we're accepting public comments over telephone and through YouTube Live Chat. If you are participating by telephone and wish to provide comments, please press star nine when the mayor opens the public comment period. Once you've pressed star nine, please wait until you hear a notification that you've been unmuted, and then you will be allotted two minutes to speak. If you're submitting public comments on YouTube, please submit your comments by writing PUBLIC COMMENTS in all caps. Introduce yourself and let us know which item you're speaking for. If you submitted comments prior to the meeting by email or letter, it has been forwarded to the city council and published to our website. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to open time for public expression. Are there any comments from public on topics not on this evening's agenda?
If you are participating by conference call and wish to please to speak, please press star nine. And while I wait for members of the public to press star nine on the telephone, I will also ask that the public comments be submitted through YouTube. I see no hands raised on the telephone, and I see no comments on YouTube.
Thanks very much. We'll therefore turn to the city manager's report. Jim, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and council. We're beginning our eighth week. I know for some it has felt like eight years of our coronavirus response, and we've been operating our emergency operations center that whole time, also known as our EOC. And for those that don't know, in the community, it's where the city turns into a disaster response organization in addition to maintaining many essential ongoing functions that we have at the city. We have several coronavirus-related items on your city council agenda tonight, including the MCCMC committee appointments, the CDBG item, city's financial budget, and the canal Wi-Fi. So I'm not going to talk about any of those here in the city manager report. Instead, I'm going to fill you in on some highlights. I'm going to try to focus just on recent efforts tonight rather than kind of giving you a more comprehensive overview of what's been happening in the EOC. There's been so many things going on that I thought it might be better to just focus on kind of very new things. But first, just to kick us off, we have today's numbers from Marin County Public Health. Two hundred and forty-one total tested positive from the beginning, forty-three hospitalizations, with notably zero in our Marin hospitals right now, and thirteen fatalities. I wanted to bring that up because the coronavirus.marinhs.org/surveillance has been continually updated and it's been recently revamped. So I'll give out that website at the end of my presentation again. But just if those wanted to look at, see some of the more recent changes, which has further breakdowns of the data, that site's been updated recently. Of course, the big news this week is the updated shelter order, which went into effect today. It extends the shelter in place through the end of May and makes changes around some definitions of essential businesses such as construction and outdoor businesses, for example landscaping. And other type of changes are in the opening of certain recreational activities such as golf and tennis with specific precautions. So the one that went into effect today and goes through the end of this month has those kind of changes in it. We had a new testing site open in San Rafael today in the Canal neighborhood, and it expects to be able to add about a hundred and thirty tests per day. There's a new, a group that's forming that's called the Marin Recovers Industry Advisory Group. And what that is, is that it's attempting to, it's being led through the county, but with lots of different community partners. The idea is to work with business leaders in our community to recommend guidance to our public health officers for ways that each of the, each of the different business sectors and industry sectors could comply with safety practices and reopen. Supervisors Redoni and Rice are co-chairing the effort for the county. And the hope is to gather information over the next three weeks in order to inform the next shelter order or whatever takes place after the one that we're currently in, which goes through May. There's a lot of different focus areas, a couple examples of like how restaurants, general office space, summer camps, transportation. What are the ways that those different industry sectors can operate safely with a more wider opening of them? There's also a website that's associated with this that went live this afternoon that's called MarinRecovers.com. And that shows kind of the process that I just talked about above in order to get input on different industry sectors. And also is going to have, it's trying to be kind of a one-stop shop for recovery information so that businesses can get information and things that are available to them as we go through a recovery period. A few other things. The latest message from the mayor video went out on Friday last week with special guest county health officer Dr. Matt Willis, who shared his thoughts on the new shelter order, which had not yet gone into effect until today. Last time I looked at it, it had over seven hundred views and was growing, so that's good. People are taking advantage of those video messages to get the latest information. You might have heard about what's called Great Plates. It was a restaurant delivery meals initiative that the governor announced. I think that was last week when he first brought it up. It pairs seniors with restaurant delivery. And all the different cities and towns in Marin have been talking together and working with the county. And our preference was to have one program that was county-wide that could reach all of the different jurisdictions and match up seniors with restaurants rather than all of us trying to run our own Great Plates programs. And that looks like that's been successful so far. Through the county EOC, the county applied this afternoon, which was the deadline, to run a two-week pilot program, which will be May 18th through 29th, and would offer three meals a day to delivery for eligible seniors. So there's going to be a lot more information on that. I'm not trying to cover kind of all the details right now. It's very new. But we'll be getting information out through all the different channels that we use, and I'm sure the other cities and towns in the county will be as well. We continue to support various fiscal aid legislation and advocate for financial relief through our federal and state representatives and the governor's office. Speaking of the governor, the governor said in a news conference today that the state is looking at opening retail for curbside pickup only as early as this Friday, which I think was not widely anticipated that that announcement was going to happen today. So by retail, I think the governor was referring to like clothing, sporting goods, bookstores, florists, I think hard goods that can be purchased and picked up at a curbside delivery. As you know, our new Marin County shelter order with a new set of guidelines just started today. So the public health officer is quickly trying to review the governor's comments. There should be any revisions to that current order on what kind of timeframe, that sort of thing. So it's all, it's all quite new. We've all had several hours only to respond to the governor's announcement that some curbside delivery, or I'm sorry, pickup could be available sooner. As the council's aware, the county can't be less restrictive than the state, but can be more restrictive. And this current shelter order that we have in Marin County is more restrictive, so that's okay. But I think the county health officer and I think all the cities and towns would want to look really closely at the governor's announcement and see if there's any further changes to the shelter order that should be done sooner than later or not. So again, I don't have details on that. That just happened this afternoon. The governor, in his announcement, said that his office would be releasing specific guidelines for stores on Thursday of this week, which is only a day before. He had, he had talked about opening up some curbside pickup. So obviously, this is very dynamic and kind of happening in real time right now. I was on a call with the county health officer and others this afternoon, and the county was just really reacting to the information at this point and saying that we really need to spend some time over the next couple, few days and make a determination of how this would take place in Marin County. Lastly, the city of San Rafael, through all of our different means, continue to publish community messaging at least three times a week, much more when you count social media, and four times a week through snapshots. So we've been sending out the San Rafael is resilient messaging, and then also the snapshot messaging. So all the sorts of things that I'm covering that all happened in the last couple of business days are the things that we're sending out regularly in those, in those community messages. Again, just to touch on the web addresses, I think most everyone has these by now, but just in case. The county site, which has a really fantastic frequently asked question list, is coronavirus.marinhs.org. The HHS is Health and Human Services. And then for the city of San Rafael, it's cityofsanafel.org/coronavirus. So our community can stay tuned to those two sites, sign up for the different e-newsletters that we're, that we're sending out, check out our social media, and you'll stay up to date on all of this kind of information. So that concludes my report, and I'll turn it back to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Well, first, thanks, thanks so much for what, what you've done. I know it's been day and night, and, and the staff as well, with great support. But it's, it's a real pleasure to, to work with you and our staff on this most trying issue that's before us. And I would suggest that you've done a marvelous job of preparing our community and keeping our community fully informed as to what's taking place. Not always the most pleasant assignment, but nevertheless, I think it's important for the community. So certainly on behalf of the city council and the community in its entirety, thank you for the yeoman's task that you've performed thus far. You mentioned Dr. Willison. I did have a message from the mayor event Friday, and I think that he clarified a lot. So if anyone's interested, you can dial in on that on our website because he, he did a very fine job, I think, of explaining where we're at, where we're going, milestones for opening, et cetera, et cetera. So I certainly was appreciative of him attending this week. We've had several weeks prior, but this was special in many ways. And I'll just add one other brief comment, that the Small Business Relief Fund is going to be distributing its first round of funding tomorrow. So that's, that's on its way. So thank you, Jim, for everything you've done. Please convey our appreciation to the staff as well. It's a little hard to do it these days, but we certainly feel that we're in good hands and appreciate your extraordinary efforts. So thank you so much for that.
You're welcome. Pass that along. Thank you, Mayor.
We'll now turn to the consent calendar, of which we have three items. I'll ask the city clerk if there are any inquiries with regard to these items before we have comment and final vote with regard to each of them collectively. Any, any public comment? I'll open public comment.
Thank you. If you are participating by conference call and wish to plead to speak, please press star nine. And while I wait for participants to press star nine on the telephone, I'll also request public comments be submitted through the live chat on YouTube. This is all with items related to the consent calendar. Mayor, while I wait for hands to raise, I did, was, I did move a little quickly on the YouTube comments for public comment. Just wanted to let you know, and there was a couple of comments that were missed. So if there's any time that you would feel appropriate, I, I went too quickly for them.
It's a little awkward, but, but you prefaced by saying you, you worked your way through it pretty quickly. So if it's okay with the others, we'll go back to the public comment and entertain those comments and then return to the consent calendar for either comment or a vote on these four, three items. So back to public comments. It's a little awkward, but let's accommodate those that have tried to, tried to reach us earlier.
Thank you. That is my mistake. I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. Give me one moment. Our first comment was from Mark Wilkinson. My name is Mark. Given the city's financial position in the coming years, I'd like the council to accept Costco's submission. And there was one more. Give me one moment. Brenna, did you? And there's one more we are adding. It's a question from the public. Their name was withheld. Is there any update on Costco? And that does conclude public comments for items that are not on the agenda.
We're not, we're not quote allowed to comment or enter into significant discussion with regard to public comments since they're not on the agenda, but I will ask the city manager if he cares to briefly update us with regard to Costco.
Sure, Mayor. I could just do a really quick informational comment, which is that the next formal stage of anything going on with Costco would be a submittal to the city of San Rafael with a plan. We do not have such a submittal. We're standing by. The actions that took place regarding Costco at Northgate Mall were preliminary in the first round. They were kind of pre-submittal discussions. So my understanding is that Costco and the mall are taking all that information and reviewing it and determining their next steps. And when they're ready to submit something to the city, they'll do so, but that has not taken place yet.
And thank you for that. And you'll, of course, update us as, as their application proceeds. So the community, I know, is interested in that matter. They appreciate the, the public comment. We'll now return to consent items, of which there, there are three items. Any, any comment by councilmembers? Any additional comment from the public?
We do have a hand raised. Give me one moment.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, this is Steve Glanz, and I'd like to comment on the Canal Wi-Fi initiative. I would suggest that you vote against it. There's certainly people in my circles who are electro-sensitive. You're talking about immunosuppression. There's a lot of evidence that, that the wireless infrastructure is a biohazard. People on your own staff believes that the wired infrastructure is much superior and healthier. I don't see that you had any health experts on the staff behind this report. And even the letters that were submitted were about five to one in, against the, the report, accepting the report. So, you know, if, if you have a sick population, they're not going to learn very much. And I think San Rafael should take a stand and, and have a legacy for promoting health in your community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I would suggest that item is later in the agenda. It doesn't directly address the consent items, which we're asking for. Any other, any other comments from the public before you go to vote? Apparently not.
There is one. Sorry about that, Mr. Mayor.
Hi, my name's Lauren. I'm actually waiting to comment till later on, so I can hold my comment till then, if it's preferable.
Lauren, I think you'll have to lower your hand. You'll need to re-raise it at the time of the item, okay?
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Okay. Any comments by councilmembers regarding the consent items? Saying none, is there a motion with regard to consent?
I move we approve the consent calendar. This is Andrew McCullough.
Second.
Moving second. A roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Collin?
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Mayor Phillips?
I'm Metta Curious 5-0. Turn to your special presentation, presentation proclaiming recognition of National Police Week. Chief, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Do you have something for us? I know that we have something for you, but if you wish to speak first, go right ahead.
Sure. I would just like to thank the council for proclaiming this and recognizing that this is National Police Week and specifically, well, actually, it's next week because there's no council meeting next week, so we're doing it now. And that May 15th, every year since 1902, when President Kennedy proclaimed this National Police Week, we are here to honor our police officers in general. And then on the 15th, it's Peace Officers Memorial Day, and that's to honor all law enforcement officers who have been killed in the line of duty. Unfortunately, each year in our country, that's usually about over a hundred officers. One is too many, and we honor them. And, and specifically in San Rafael, the proclamation that the mayor will read is honoring our police officers. Any day of the year, they do a wonderful job, and they're putting their lives on the line to seen and unseen dangers. We're in a crazy time now where there's a lot of unseen dangers, and they're still out there every day doing their job and not asking questions about it. They're just doing it. They're doing it as safely as they can, but they're in a harms way, and I can't thank them enough for what they're doing for our community and for each other. And I know that with their professionalism and who they are as people, we'll get through this as a city and as a department and as a country, but I just honor them and honor you guys for every year doing this for us. It means a lot, and we just appreciate working here and for the citizens there. So thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members.
Well, thank you, Chief, and thanks for those who were able to join us this evening. I do have a proclamation, and I'm going to cite part of it for this important event. Proclamation, City of San Rafael, proclamation recognizing National Police Week, whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th, 2020, as Peace Officers Memorial Day and May 10th through the 16th as National Police Week. And whereas the members of San Rafael Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of all of those residing in or visiting San Rafael. And it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their own law enforcement agency. And the members, the, the police department recognize their duties to serve the public, excuse me, serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against opposition, the oppression. The women and men of the San Rafael Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now, therefore, being resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of San Rafael call upon all patriotic civil and educational organizations to observe the week of May 10th to May 16th as Police Week, with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to responsibilities and rendering a dedicated service to their communities and in doing so have established themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. Therefore, we call upon all citizens of the city of San Rafael to recognize Friday, May 15th, as Police Officers Memorial Day, in honor of those laws enforcement, law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community and/or have become disabled in the performance of duty and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors and our fallen heroes. To witness, I therefore, by hand and seal, City of San Rafael, to effect the Fourth of May in the year 2020. And I'm delighted to recognize our outstanding police department from top to bottom. The community is forever grateful for all that you've done and will continue to do. We know we're in very good hands, and we thank you so much for, for dealing with the difficult issues that we know you do. And our hat is certainly off to each and every member of the police department, men and women. Thank you. Thank you very much to each and everyone. So hope it's a great week. Looks like it's going to be, and, and thanks for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, let's see. There's no action that needs to be taken. We've already proclaimed, so with that, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is, which is 6A, CDBG CARE Act Funding Recommendations for Fiscal Year 2019-2020. Jim? Thanks, Chief, and all, everybody.
Mayor, I'm just going to turn this right away to Ethan Guy in the Community Development Department, who did the good staff work on this item.
Excellent. Good evening, Ethan.
Evening. I'm also joined with me with Molly Cron, Gillian Ziegler, and Lili Thomas from the counties. So if any questions do come up, they're also available and they're on the line. So the item before you today is a resolution recommending CDBG CARES Act funding for the 2019-20 fiscal year, allocating that money, recommending allocation to the Marin County Board of Supervisors for the San Rafael Planning Area. It's important to note that this money is separate from the CDBG item that was brought to council a few weeks ago, but it was allocated in the meantime, since we last heard of that item. This money is a part of the CARES Act, which was adopted by President Trump on March 27th, 2020, which allocates about $20 trillion nationwide. Five billion of that, two trillion, was allocated for the CDBG program, and the money right now represents two billion of that five billion. So as part of the CDBG funds, the county was awarded $938,000 through the CDBG program specific to COVID-19 response. Of that $938,000, San Rafael represents about $369,000. Since these funds are really designed for COVID-19 response, ourselves and several other jurisdictions wanted to make the recommendation to allocate those funds specifically for emergency rental assistance. And right now, there's an existing program at the county operating emergency rental assistance, emergency rental assistance, trying to provide funding for rental payments for households at 30% or less than the area median income. They're working with organizations like Community Action Marin and Canal Alliance, St. Vincent's, and also Ritter Health to provide these rental payments. The action would be approving the, the recommendation to allocate the, the sum of those funds, the $369,000 for emergency rental assistance. Nevada and the county are also recommending the same funding, so there would be $938,000 if all jurisdictions, $930,000 if all jurisdictions approved those funds to go to emergency rental assistance. So I'll leave it there. Feel free to ask questions and happy to answer anything and dig a little deeper.
Thank you, Ethan. Try it once again. Excellent report, as per usual. Are there any questions before we go to public? Andrew?
Yeah, this, this seems like a, an excellent use of the funds that have come our way through the CARES Act, but I do wonder, what are other jurisdictions outside of Marin County who are receiving CDBG CV funds doing with their allotment? Are they also earmarking it towards emergency rent relief, or are there other needs within their communities that they find a higher priority for?
It, it really is unique to the jurisdiction. Part of the, the funding source, the idea was to get them out as fast as possible. So to get the money in and get it out as fast as possible, a lot of jurisdictions are using it for rental payments, but that's because those systems are usually already set up using CDBG funds. So there are quite a bit of reporting requirements and tracking requirements as part of CDBG. And these funds would still have to utilize those same reporting and tracking requirements. So it, it's a little bit easier to just automatically move those funds into those existing CDBG programs, which are usually designated for rental assistance or housing assistance. There are a few different options that could potentially use these funds that don't necessarily have those systems set in place yet. And staff is working on trying to get those systems in place with the anticipation that the $3 billion will be released soon and being able to potentially utilize these funds in other different areas throughout the city.
I think that would be terrific. Thank you.
I'll, I'll just add, I, I did talk to the mayor's office down in San Diego because they caught my eye. They use these funds, a portion of the funds, to assist their small businesses as, as we are doing in a different venue. And I did ask, and I'll ask the city manager to further expand, but they are already set up to disperse funds in that way, and we are not. And therefore, a conversation with the city manager indicated that we wouldn't be prepared to do so if, if we wanted to at this point, but perhaps further down the road, we, we can if we so decide. So perhaps, Jim, you can expand on that just a little bit.
Sure. Yeah, as Ethan said, this is kind of the first round of these additional CDBG funds, and we think there's going to be more rounds of it. The ability to, for example, put these funds into the small business grant program is something that we looked at because we, we thought that that could have some merit. But because of all of the different, trying to think of a nice way to, to say, federal bureaucracy and red tape that you have to go through to become a disperser of CDBG funds, in talking with the Chamber of Commerce, we felt like it made more sense to start going through those things now, which could be a multiple month process, and get these monies out immediately to help people that are in danger of becoming homeless. And then in future rounds of CDBG funds, consider small businesses or other sorts of programs. There's some work that the, the folks that are from the county that are on the line know that we want to take a look at, and we've heard feedback from the community of ways that they would like to see these funds spent in future rounds as well. So we want to make sure that we've got time to do that, and so we'll be doing that work now as it leads up to future CDBG funds being released.
Any, any other questions? Oh, I'm sorry, John.
Yeah, just, just really quick, Ethan, on the normal CDBG funds, if, if the recipient doesn't use them within allotted time, they're kicked back to and forwarded on to other projects that might not have received funding or received a lesser amount. Throwing close to a million dollars into, into this bucket between Nevada, the county, and, and San Rafael, if those funds aren't exhausted, is there a timeframe on this where those could be reallocated or could be repositioned to other requests? I, I don't know if that'll be the case, but if it is, I mean, a million dollars is a lot of money, and I don't know if there is going to, if we're going to fill that need, or there'll be essentially oversubscribed for that need. So just wondering on, on that piece, what happens to those funds, and is there a timeframe on this? It's a good question, and I'm going to ask Gillian to, to try to answer that.
Hi. I'll speak to that. So with the rental assistance program, I can tell you that based on the waitlist, there's about $1.5 million that still would be needed for people who need April rent. We're, we're still trying to figure out how many of those people would need May rent. So I think in this case, the money is essentially already spoken for. We have our normal CDBG timeliness requirements for these dollars, but we're, we're going to try to fast-track the contracts because we are aware of such great need here.
Good question, John, and thank you for the answer and the follow-up. Any, any other? Open public. Anyone from the public? Lindsay?
Yeah, if you are participating by telephone and you wish to speak on this item, please press star nine. And while we're waiting for those to press star nine, if you are attending through YouTube, would you please submit your comments through YouTube? As of now, we do have a comment.
Yes. This is John Reynolds. Do you hear me?
Yes, we can, John. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, it's good that the city council, I see you on the YouTube as well as phoning in. It's good. And I appreciate that. I'm, you know, I'm a member of the Canal, but also, first of all, I've got this church and MOC. I'm not speaking for MOC or the church particularly, I'm speaking for myself, but a lot of people are concerned that people, rent protection, we need to have funds to go for renters to aid them. There's a lot of being done in the, in the county for that, and also the cities. Nevada and San Rafael need to proceed with that. And yeah, and it's already spoken for, like the person said, so we really need to have that money available in all ways to support renters that are low-income people, $35,000 a year or less. So I appreciate you saying yes to having this, this fund, vote for low-income renters in, in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else?
I'm not seeing anyone else who's on the telephone who wishes to provide public comments and going to our YouTube comments. We did receive one comment by email while the city council was attending closed session. And let me go ahead and start my timer. From Meredith Parnell, she's the volunteer coordinator at St. Vincent de Paul Society of Marin. Dear Mayor Phillips and San Rafael City Council members, for the last five weeks, I have been coordinating the St. Vincent de Paul Society's participation in the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, and have had firsthand experience of the desperation that renters throughout the county are feeling at this time of crisis. San Rafael has been particularly hit hard, in part because its immigrant population does not qualify for unemployment insurance or the federal payments under the CARES Act, despite the fact that many of these immigrants pay federal and state taxes using an ITIN number. Of the $1 million allocated by the county of Marin in partnership with the Marin Community Foundation, $650,000 was earmarked for the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. A number of agencies, including St. Vincent de Paul Society, have been working around the clock to field hundreds of phone calls from the panicked renters. We use a jointly owned spreadsheet to track calls and avoid duplication, and of the 614 calls we have collectively received to date, 357 of them were from San Rafael residents. In addition, between St. Vincent de Paul Society and Canal Lion, we have approximately 100 calls from San Rafael residents that we have yet to address. Finally, there is now a waitlist compiled by the county's call center that it's over 680 calls on it, and the vast majority are from San Rafael residents. We have collectively exhausted the initial allocation of $650,000. Given that we still have not talked to everyone who needs help with April rent, and that the renters who found the resources to pay for April rent will surely need assistance for May, we expect the need to more than double. The county and Marin Community Foundation have increased their commitment to the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, and the city of Nevada has agreed to allocate their CDBG funds to this program. On behalf of the St. Vincent de Paul Society and the many wonderful nonprofit agencies who are working so hard on behalf of your residents, we ask that you please follow your staff recommendation and allocate, and allocate San Rafael's portion of CDBG CARES Act funding to the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. Thanks and stay safe.
Okay. Thank you. Any others?
That concludes public comment.
Thank you. We'll close public, come back to council. Any questions from council members?
I don't have any questions, but I did want to thank Ethan and the rest of the staff for working with Nevada and every, you know, all the other entities. This money came down really quickly. We want to be able to disperse it quickly, and thanks to you, we are in the position to consider this item. So thank you. I guess with that, I'd make a motion.
Sounds like a motion? Is there a second? Councilmember McCullough?
Second.
Moving second. Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. May I have, can you repeat the motion? Councilmember or Vice Mayor Collin?
Okay. I will, but I have to call it up. Okay, hold on a second. Okay. I make a motion that we approve recommending the CDBG slash CV funding for the 2019-20 fiscal year to the Marin County Board of Supervisors for the San Rafael Planning Area.
Thank you. Is that acceptable, Councilmember McCullough?
It is. I, that we're adopting the resolution, yes, I second that.
Thank you. Now roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Collin.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
Hi, Matter Curious 5-0. We'll now turn to B, preliminary impact COVID-19 pandemic. Oh, God. And the man, I can't, for some reason, I can't say that. City finances initial programs to aid in recovery pandemic, I guess it is.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Christina Lilovich. I'm the Assistant City Manager, and I wanted to start tonight's presentation with just And I wanted to start tonight's presentation with just acknowledging in a heartfelt way the amount of suffering and loss that's happening in our world right now. And although I think our county is in a fairly good place, there's still many that are really struggling. And I think it's just can't begin the topic of this conversation without acknowledging that. In addition to that, I also think it's important to take a pause and appreciate, you know, the true heroes amongst us. I really appreciated we were acknowledging our law enforcement tonight. Thank Chief Bishop for that. But our healthcare workers in the community and our public safety first responders are really putting their lives on the line. They always do, but at this time, it's exceptionally difficult. And we know that we want them to know how much we appreciate what they're doing for all of us out there. I also wanted to take a moment to appreciate the dedication of the city of San Rafael staff and what they've done to show up for our community in this crisis is pretty remarkable. Jim mentioned the EOC, our Emergency Operations Center. We're on day 52 of that activation following the local emergency declaration. And it's pretty remarkable to see people swiftly move out of their traditional typical roles in providing local government services into completely different roles, like virtual libraries and community services, what we're doing to support individuals experiencing homelessness, to try to protect those individuals from COVID, providing emergency childcare operations for our healthcare workers. I mean, the list really does go on and on. I don't want to, I'm afraid I'm going to leave something out because there's so much incredible good work going on right now, but it does feel really important to acknowledge it and let you know how proud we are. I also, you know, Jim mentioned that there is an extraordinary amount of collaboration going on regionally with Marin County, their Emergency Operations Center, and the other cities and towns in Marin. I especially wanted to appreciate and recognize Dr. Willis and Dr. Santora for their leadership and support during this crisis. We're working with them sometimes daily and definitely weekly on trying to better understand how to implement and enforce the public health orders. And they have been extraordinarily supportive, given the amount of time constraints that they have. So we really appreciate all that they're doing on our behalf. And then one last acknowledgement, I do want to particularly appreciate Quinn Gardner, our Emergency Management Coordinator. Her level of skill and expertise in operating an emergency operations center is truly exceptional. And her leadership in guiding us through a myriad of processes every day to keep good communications going is pretty incredible. So wanted to thank Quinn as well. So tonight, I'm going to just provide some high points of the staff report that are in your packet. I know it was a lengthy staff report, but I'm going to hit the high points and then of what we're doing to both financially and otherwise support the community during this crisis and what we are intending or moving forward in the future. And then Nadine Haidt, our Finance Director, is going to take over and she's going to provide a detailed presentation of what the financial impacts are thus far. So I'll just start by saying that we are working regularly as well with our federal and state legislators to hopefully receive some financial assistance in the future. Unfortunately, so far, the CARES, the Federal CARES Act appears to only directly support municipalities that have a population over 500,000, but we're hopeful and expecting to see some relief in the next federal stimulus bill. I also just wanted to mention that a few weeks ago now, it feels like a long time ago, but only a few weeks ago, we implemented the Families First Act, which provides emergency sick leave and an additional eligibility for Family Medical Leave Act related to any of our employees in our workforce that have a COVID-related illness. So moving on, I'm going to talk a little bit about what we've done so far to support the community. And this is again, just a couple of highlights. It's not an exhaustive list of everything that's happened. But I wanted to acknowledge a few efforts locally here, starting with Vice Mayor Collins spearheading a neighbor-to-neighbor program, which has done some incredible work out in neighborhoods, calling for, I love the term, "street angels" to go out and encourage folks to connect with their neighbors and to provide support and assistance, particularly to those most vulnerable and of need of support. And there's a digital toolkit on our website that's really, really well done and a great resource for folks who might be interested in supporting that program. Additionally, due to economic impacts, the small businesses have particularly been struggling. And Mayor Phillips and his leadership spurred a Small Business COVID-19 Disaster Relief Fund. And that was a successful collaboration between the city, the county, the chamber, and the Business Improvement District that's raised over $200,000 to provide small business grant loans up to $5,000. There's been extreme interest in that program. We have received 280 applications and have been working hard to try to distribute those funds. In addition, and Ethan mentioned a bit about support for our vulnerable communities, the County Board of Supervisors did adopt an emergency resolution moratorium on evictions for non-payment of rent, and we'll probably be hearing more about that soon. So at this point, I'm going to move on to covering what we've done thus far to address some of the financial losses and impacts due to COVID-19. You don't have all the details yet on the business case for why we need to be doing these things, but you'll hear that shortly from Nadine. So starting in fiscal year 2021, we've already made the decision that we are not moving forward with any future employee compensation increases. That will affect four of our groups, employee groups, two of which are the executive and mid-management group, will not be receiving any cost of living adjustment for the next fiscal year. In addition, we do have two bargaining units that their contracts expire on June 30th. That's WCE and Local One. Those contracts, we are not in a position at this point to be providing a salary or compensation or COLA increase to those groups, and we're in ongoing conversations with them about how to move forward with their contract. We've also, in order to address the revenue losses, we've also halted all non-essential spending. And so what this means is that Nadine has directed and Jim has directed our departments to halt all non-essential spending. So any projects that were in process or we were in the development of professional services agreements, we have halted all of those. We've also proceeded in late March with a hiring freeze, and there are 14 current vacant positions that we are planning in the fiscal year 2021 budget to remain frozen. It's important to make mention that the, those 14 positions being frozen do have a service-related impact in what we're able to do. So we're still in the process of identifying exactly what those impacts will be, and we'll be providing more information in the future. But as an example, we may have to reduce operating hours at some public counters, potentially at certain library branches, and there may be slower processing times for permits or planning development applications. We try to innovate and improve these services wherever possible, but the reality is that we will see some impact to service delivery. So that's what we've done thus far. We are needing to do more cost-cutting measures. They are most definitely necessary based on our financial situation. We're using a guiding principle and it's based on starting with voluntary measures for cost-cutting and exhausting all potential savings related to those voluntary measures before we proceed with non-voluntary measures. However, it's important to note that based on our current financial projections, we believe we will need to move forward with more non-voluntary measures, such as reductions in force in the future. What we're recommending tonight is moving forward with three programs, two of which are voluntary. The first is a voluntary retirement separation program, which would offer those retirement-eligible employees an incentive pay equal to one week's base pay in their current position for each year of service for a maximum of $30,000. And we expect that program to, for individuals to be able to take advantage of that program and could have a significant savings ongoing, because those positions would continue, would not be filled. They would remain vacant for those who participated in that program. The program does require city manager approval, so there is an application process that if your council wanted to proceed with, would start tomorrow. And people would, employees would have the opportunity up through May the 22nd to determine whether they wanted to put in an application for that program. Nadine is going to cover all of the financials on this. So I'm just going to go through the conceptual aspects of the programs. The voluntary, the second program is a voluntary work hours reduction program, which would save on expenses if employees wanted to, for a certain period of time, not to exceed three months, to volunteer to take a certain amount of time off. Employees' benefits would stay intact, but that could have some significant savings. And then the third program is a non-voluntary program that we feel is necessary at this time, which is a furlough mandatory time off program only for non-public safety employees. These, the terms of this program are established in each of the miscellaneous bargaining unit MOUs. And it allows for an up to 5% pay reduction, which equates to approximately 13 unpaid days off. Those days off would result in approximately a month, a day a month for the fiscal year 2021, where we would have to close city services to the public, so that there is a service reduction impact there. So with that, I think I just wanted to mention that we will be coming back to council on a very regular basis, probably every meeting in the foreseeable future, to provide updates, provide updated financial information, to continue to make recommendations about how to manage both revenues and expenses. We're in the process right now of developing a COVID, and Jim mentioned this in his city manager's report, a COVID Economic Recovery Plan, which we're calling a SERP, which summarizes all of our recovery activities and will be a tool for communicating with the public at a, in a high level. We're preparing a draft to bring forward to your council for feedback and discussion at the next meeting on May the 18th. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Nadine, who's going to go over the financial impacts with you, and then I'll stay on the call in case there are specific questions or comments related to my portion of the presentation.
Thanks, Christine. Good job. Nadine, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Christine, and good evening, Mayor and council members. Thanks for having me here remotely. So as we discuss the financial implications of COVID-19, I'll be referring to two tables in the staff report. The first is on page six and presents the current estimate of revenue losses over the remainder of this fiscal year and the next fiscal year. The second is on page 10 and presents the estimated dollar amount of the cost-cutting measures discussed in this report that Christine also alluded to. As you've heard multiple times tonight, this is our best estimate, given the information that we have at this point. The numbers will be changing and we will continue to update you on the status as they do. So let's jump right into it. If we look at page six, you'll see a table there, and it's broken out into two fiscal years, the remainder of this fiscal year and the following year. I prefer to look at the fiscal year losses in total, as there are sometimes timing differences and losses may occur across years. The total percentage reduction of our general fund revenues is approximately 14% when comparing this almost $12 million loss to fiscal year 19 total general revenues. So to put that into perspective, what we currently expect to lose in revenues, which is about 12 million, is half of what we pay for our whole police department or almost two-thirds of the city's general fund money expended for our fire department or 100% of public works activity as part of the general fund for a period of one year. The bulk of the losses pertain to sales and transaction and use tax. It's about 71% of the losses. Unfortunately, cities such as San Rafael, who are heavily reliant on this source, as well as transient occupancy tax, which we often refer to as TOT, will endure the hardest financial hit. For revenue losses related to sales, transaction, and use tax, the shelter in place has caused a halt in the amount of local purchasing, and the reduced level of income for many households generally reduces overall purchases. Furthermore, the unfortunate repercussions of this recession could cause businesses to close, as we are already seeing. Transient occupancy tax is about 10% of this loss number. We believe that this will suffer due to only essential services being available at this point and therefore not very much leisurely traveling. And although this will become less restrictive, we do not anticipate levels of travel and occupancy to bounce back to the same volume that they were previously at. Business licenses makes up about 6% of this loss. They have mostly been renewed for this fiscal year, which is fiscal year 20, but we don't expect to see new businesses coming in. And for those that haven't been renewed, we're unsure as to what the status will be. For fiscal year 21, we're estimating a reduction based on the number of businesses renewing their licenses, as we don't think that we'll have quite the volume that we have had in the past. And the assumption that gross revenues for all the businesses renewing will be less than previous years. So that will directly affect their business license payment to the city. The remaining revenue losses, about 13%, are the accumulation of several smaller revenue generating sources, including building and permitting fees. Investment fees is another large one, as we've experienced some good investment returns, and that has quickly declined. I'd also like to note that although we are only showing effects for the last quarter of this fiscal year and the full year of 2021, fiscal year 2021, the recessionary impacts are expected to linger into future years, albeit less severe as time passes. So again, although we're estimating, we're presenting to you a $12 million revenue loss for a 16-month period, this is expected to be ongoing for 24 to 36 months. And through that, we could see reductions of about $21 million. Furthermore, at this point, there is no promise of federal or state aid to address at least the revenue losses. So none of that has been included in the analysis. And lastly, staff is evaluating ways to increase revenues to offset these losses whenever possible, which could mean a recommended increase in the paramedic tax or other fees. So with that, if you could turn to page 10 of your staff report, we can talk about some of the expense reductions a little bit. As you heard, Assistant City Manager Christine detail out, we've done several things to reduce costs already. And as part of this report, are requesting your approval on a few more actions. We've already implemented a hiring freeze of currently 14 positions that are open and will not be filled. The dollar amount associated with this is 1.4 million. And we will see a little bit of savings related to that for this fiscal year as well, since we've already started that hiring freeze. Should you approve the voluntary retirement separation program? We're estimating that this will be a savings of approximately $600,000. Should you approve the ability to proceed and work with the labor groups regarding the mandatory furlough program? We're estimating a $700,000 savings there. And this would be inclusive of all staff other than safety and childcare. We're requesting to use one-time funds available from prior years of approximately 1.1 million and are projecting the use of emergency reserve funds of approximately $4 million, which should bring the reserve down to 5% instead of our targeted 10%, which is currently at 7.9 million. And even with all of those reductions that I just mentioned, we still need additional budget reductions of approximately $4.2 million. As we work with all city departments, we're identifying cuts anywhere between 2.5% to 10% based on the services that are offered by each department to reach this target. Of course, this is a number that we'll continue to chase because if our revenue losses increase or decrease or if our expense cuts don't come in as we're currently estimating, the remainder of the savings will need to come out of this department budget reductions amount. amount. And lastly, as you've already heard, but doesn't hurt to mention again, as a result of these cost cutting measures, we'll see reductions in services. The impacts of these reductions to services will be shared with you in greater detail at future council meetings as we finalize the fiscal year 2021 budget. With that, I'll recap the staff recommendations and then open it up for questions. So tonight, with this information, what we're asking from you is to accept the informational report, approve the resolution approving a voluntary retirement separation, approve the resolution approving a voluntary work hours reduction, and approve the implementation of the mandatory furlough program. And I'll open it up for questions.
Well, first, thank you so much for all the work that you've done and everybody that's been involved in this, just about everyone, I guess, at this point. So it's an outstanding report. We had a discussion a little while ago in closed session about some of the consequences as well. So we're, we're better informed and continue to, to look forward to your reports that give us updates and change of assumptions and impacts, et cetera, et cetera. But first, before comments, I want to thank you and everybody that's been involved. And I would suggest that the assumptions, while they will change, and they're, they're early on, so they certainly will change. I do think that the assumptions that you've made, drawing the conclusion, for example, with regard to deserve, seem reasonable to me at this point in time. So I thank you, thank you for that, that work. We'll start with comments from council members and then go to the public and then back for wrap up. Vice Mayor Colin?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and I echo the compliments. I mean, this is the first of many, many conversations that we're going to have among us and also with our community. So my question's more just a communication question. Is there a way to have just part of that staff report or things that you're talking about up on the website as opposed to buried in the entire packet? This is something that I know community members are going to want to dig into. You gave a lot of information. We've been able to see it. We saw it last Wednesday. We've been able to read it, but I think people are going to want to digest it and go back to it. So if there's a easy way that we can start to refer people to where they can get that information, that would be great. Thank you.
Yeah, good, good suggestion.
Yeah.
Councilmember McCullough.
Yeah, a question, just on the voluntary retirement program, does anyone recall what the amount was that was offered for the similar program during the Great Recession by the city of San Rafael?
It was the same dollar amount program, the same terms.
Okay, and so what, if we were to accept this proposal, then we're accepting an amount up to a maximum as set forth in the staff report of 30,000 per person, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's my question. Thank you.
And thank you, Councilmember Gamblin.
Yeah, I know it's not specifically covered in the, in the staff report here, and again, thank you for the very concise and precise staff report with all the information that you provided. It's been great. Maybe in the future, or maybe you can address it here, additional tax is that we get specific to gas tax, for example, and SB1, and obviously the people that are not driving, like most of us, a lot of people aren't buying a lot of gas, so I'd imagine those revenues have significantly decreased as well, and I don't see that in this report, and I know that's, that's not a general fund item, so I get that. But with all the deferred maintenance that we have in our roads and infrastructure, that gas tax has historically been used for some of those things, those needs are going to be, have to be filled somewhere else. So it'd be nice to, in future reports, if, if not here, address that and how the, the drawdown of other sources, specifically the gas tax, is going to impact us going forward as well.
Yes, Councilmember Gamblin, that's a great point, and it's one that we will bring forth to you in the next council meeting on May 18th, where we will present the CIP plan. So the CIP, gas taxes used, a portion of that, a large portion, is used for our projects, for our streets maintenance and other projects, and we are projecting certainly a decline in revenues, especially for fiscal year 2021 and potentially ongoing for the next several years. And as a result of that, you'll see a decline in the number of projects that we have on the list.
Yeah, good, good question, certainly.
And just, just really quick to follow up on it, so, and, and I apologize for not knowing the historical basis on this, but how often on very specific projects are we tapping into the general fund when we don't have enough resources from things like the, the, the gas tax? So we're specifically talking about the general fund here and how we might make up those gaps through specific programs. Would we just defer those pieces and, and not feel the need? So the, just my question is, additional draws into the general fund are not accounted for by other projects and CIPs, so the assumption is that we wouldn't do those, because we wouldn't be drawing down further on the general fund if we couldn't afford it with other resources?
Correct. We would not be drawing down further on the general fund, certainly. I've heard of times where there's been an absolute emergency, so, you know, a pump explodes. Well, in that situation, if you don't have the funds in the proper fund, then you either have to move into your emergency reserves or some portion of the general fund. And again, that's, you know, one example of something that may have happened many, many years ago, and I'd like to think that that won't happen again, but that's the time where I could see us potentially falling on the general fund if we absolutely had to. But we would not use general funds for projects just so that we could complete them.
Thank you, and, and without going into a great deal of detail, I'm continually impressed with the work you've done, particularly using some of the, the modeling that the city has incorporated. We're looking at a pretty sophisticated program that helps us work our way through this. It's not just, you know, let's hope and wish, et cetera, like perhaps some cities. So maybe you could very briefly describe, describe the model that you use to help us understand the assumptions and the changes, and then financial impact of each of those changes briefly, if you wouldn't mind?
Sure, absolutely. So in late 2019, we worked with Management Partners, which is a firm full of retired finance directors and even assistant city managers and city managers, and we worked with them to create a model, a financial model, that allows you to project where you think you'll be from current date for the next 20 years. And so in that, we've been able to look at all our debt that's maturing, we've been able to look at certain measures that are sunsetting, such as our Measure E, which sunsets in 2034, we're able to look at when our pension rates start to see a decline, and on the flip side, we're able to look at situations like this and really get involved in scenario planning where we can say, okay, well, what are expected losses going to be for revenues? And not only does that mean what that means for this year, but for future years to come. So when we talk about using our emergency reserves, well, we're using them, you know, we're using up to 5%, let's say, as talked about in the staff report, over a 16 month period. Well, getting that back and being able to grow our general fund reserve, our emergency reserve, to up to 10% as policy by council, it would take us until 2025, given the current conditions. And that's conditions as they are now. That could change and be dramatically worse, or it could potentially be better if we receive federal aid to help us with our losses. But the model is very complex. It looks at individuals, so all of our employees are in this model, and, you know, we're looking at what their health insurance is and whether they're classic or Pepper for pension purposes. So it's a very intricate model, and I've really enjoyed using it for purposes such as this, so that we can see where our financial situation falls, not only today, but for future years.
Well, it's a nice summary, and thanks for doing so, and I presume if the press might be interested in, in reviewing that, that you'd be able to go through it with them, because it's complex, it's comprehensive, and it's flexible, and I think those are good features with regard to financial forecasting, so we can get ourselves in the, in the right place even after this, this trauma we're now going through. We'll know where we're at and where we're going and plan accordingly. With that, like no other council member comments, so let's open to the public. Lindsay, are there anyone from the public wish to speak or address this on this item?
If there's anybody on the telephone who wishes to provide public comment, please press star nine now. And while I wait for those to press star nine, I will ask that members who are watching on YouTube Live, if they will submit their comments to the YouTube Live chats. I'm seeing no one who's pressed star nine on the telephone. And for public comments, there is a name withheld. Are city employees who were sent home to work still being paid, or are they using their own leave time? Another comment is from Jamie Poirier. Mr. Mayor and Council, my name is Jamie Poirier, and I am SEIU 1021 member. I want to draw your attention to the important work SEIU members perform during regular times and now during COVID. Many staff are performing their regular work, but quite a few of us are working in the EOC. I urge you to consider how to serve the community before authorizing layoffs. Thank you for your time. Another comment, name withheld. Hello, everyone. Good evening. Items 6B, 2 and 3 were seriously, will seriously reduce the productivity and quality of the public services we provide. I request a no vote on these items. Give me one moment. And it looks like we still have no, no one on the telephone, and that does conclude public comment.
And then thanks for that. We'll close public. Christine, any comments with regard to the three points made from the public?
Sure, I can respond to the question specifically about our employees, city employees being paid who are not at work, and the answer really is how they're paid depends upon what their work assignment is. So some employees are, like the other public comment, are working in the EOC that are typically library staff, for example. So the way the city's approached remote work assignments, EOC, and disaster service worker assignments, as all city employees are disaster service workers, is that we, our HR department worked very closely with all of our departments to develop remote work plans and agreements with all of our employees who could have the ability to do remote work programs. Our digital services team has worked really hard to get people the available tools to be able to do that and stay as productive as possible. Then the family's first act that I mentioned in my staff presentation came forward, which requires all public employers to provide 80 hours, up to 80 hours of emergency sick leave under specific criteria. So some employees have applied for that leave, and we've provided it if they've met the, the legal requirements. And then in other cases where either an employee does not have 100% remote work assignment or other DSW assignment, or didn't qualify for emergency sick leave under that law, they are taking their own leave accruals, vacation, comp time, sick time, et cetera, in order to make up the balance of their pay.
Excellent. Thank, thanks for the comment. Let's now turn to comment by council members. Anyone wish to comment on this item before we go to vote? See no one. I do think that it's imperative that, to the extent that we can, obviously, it's a shrinking possibility, but to preserve public services, we have a good reputation for, for doing so, and this is going to take a, a little bit of a hit, and we'll communicate what that might be, so the community is prepared for that eventuality, but we're certainly going to preserve the services to the extent possible, and thanks to Nadine and her staff and Christine and everyone else, we'll know, we'll know where we're at on this thing. So it's not going to get away from us. We may have to make some adjustments as we go along. That's the nature of assumptions, but I would suggest that we'll be on top of this thing, making those decisions as, as they become necessary. So with that, there are no other comments, and the motion would be appropriate. We'll take, excuse me.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm wondering if I can make a comment, but I'm happy to make a motion as well, but I'd like to make a comment if I could.
Councilmember McCullough, please do. Thank you.
Just really responding to a couple of the comments that were made, public comments that were made. This item is important, and I too appreciate the hard work that went into this and the difficult decisions that resulted in these recommendations. They're not easy ones, and they are going to affect the level of service that our public has come to expect, and they're also going to affect our employees. But the fact of the matter is, we have to balance our budget, and if we project a decline in revenues, then we have no choice but to cut expenses. And what we're looking at here are potential, are the least painful set of expense cuts. So for an employee to express concern about what we're proposing to do by adopting these resolutions, it's understandable, but there's a reality here that we simply can't dodge, and I'm grateful that we're trying to be as proactive and we're trying to act as early in this pandemic as we can, so that we're not forced to, to make even greater sacrifices later. So with that, I'm happy to make a motion unless others have comments to make.
A good comment. Thanks for adding that. I see none, so a motion would be appropriate. We'll take each of them separate to vote right.
Very well, then I move that we accept the informational report.
Second.
Mayor Phillips, your microphone is muted, but I did read.
I'm sorry.
So, Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Colin.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
Aye, and that matter carries 5-0 on the next, next item.
Move we adopt the resolution approving a voluntary retirement separation program.
Second.
Move in second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Colin.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
Aye, matter carries 5-0, number three.
Move we adopt the resolution approving a voluntary work hours reduction program.
Second.
Move in second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Colin.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
Aye, matter carries 5-0 and the final, I think, final item.
Yeah, I move that we approve the implementation of the mandatory furlough program as outlined in the city's labor agreements and direct staff to meet and consult with all bargaining units.
Thank you. Second, is there a second? Move in second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Colin.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
Aye, and that matter also carries. We'll move on to item C, Canal Neighborhood Wi-Fi Network.
Good evening. Hi, can you hear me? Great.
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
All right. Thanks so much for having me tonight. My name's Rebecca Woodbury. I'm the Director of Digital Service and Open Government, and I am joined here tonight by Vin Pham, a member of my team. He is our Data and Infrastructure Manager. There's Vin live from his garage. All right. Thanks, everyone. So I'm going to flip over to a slideshow. Oh, Lindsay, it says it's disabled participant screen sharing. Is there a way to?
Give me one moment to give you that. Will you, will you try that now?
I can do it now. Yep.
Thank you.
All right. All right. So thank you again for having us here virtually tonight. We're here to talk about a project to create a Wi-Fi network in the Canal Neighborhood, but I'll also talk about a lot of other efforts that have been underway to expand internet, expand internet access to students and to others during this time. I just first want to start by saying it's been such an honor to work with all of the community partners on these efforts, the schools, the county, nonprofit organizations. It's been really inspiring work, and it's an honor for my team to be a part of these efforts. So with the stay at home orders from COVID-19, digital equity issues have been exacerbated. They existed before COVID-19. They're especially exacerbated now. Students now rely on the internet more than ever to do their schoolwork, and also many people are, are accessing critical government services, sometimes for the very first time, things like unemployment or food assistance. So these new services, they may not have been accessing them before, and it's really critical that they have the internet to be able to access these services. So far, we've been working on a variety So far, we've been working on a variety of ways to address this issue. I really want to stress that it's been a multi-pronged approach. It's a complex challenge to solve. And I, I believe really that it takes doing a lot of different things. There is no silver bullet to this challenge. So I'm going to touch on a few of these efforts here. So, you know, there's a lot of partners working on these together. And so it's not just the city doing these things alone. We're very much working in concert with the San Rafael City Schools, the County of Marin, Canal Alliance and other organizations on this challenge. Again, what we're going to be talking about today, this Wi-Fi network, it's not a panacea. I see it as just another piece of the puzzle to this. I do want to touch on some of the progress that's been made on some of these other efforts. San Rafael City Schools has distributed thousands of laptops to students over the past few weeks and they're currently distributing hundreds of personal hotspots to help those children with the laptops get connected to the internet if they don't have home internet. We've worked to help promote existing low cost and free commercial internet programs. So things like the Comcast Internet Essentials Program, Sonic has a similar program and so does AT&amp;T. So we've worked to promote that. And we have heard that some signups have increased with those programs. So that's great that people are, are gaining access to those. We've also worked to promote free and open commercial hotspots and are grateful to Comcast especially. They went out into the Canal Neighborhood early on in this crisis and installed additional hotspots. And then we also boosted the Wi-Fi signal at the Borro Community Center, which is similar to other efforts that schools and libraries have made across, across the county. So other things that I wanted to note on here that I think are really critical to this puzzle is increasing digital literacy. This is something that our Library and Recreation Department continues to do with their programming, helping people up their tech and computer skills. And also ensuring that critical services are accessible on mobile devices. So mobile first services are critical. We have been working with departments on this and it's more important than ever. Unfortunately, the city of San Rafael doesn't have control over some of the federal or state's digital services people are asking for at this time. But as mobile devices are, and smartphones are the most prevalent device in households, it's really critical that these services work on phones. I also want to highlight that high quality, affordable wired broadband is an incredible asset to any community and we ultimately really want to work towards that goal. But tonight I'm going to share our progress on another piece of the puzzle, which is to create a Wi-Fi network in the Canal Neighborhood. One of the most amazing aspects of this project is how many agencies and organizations are working together. It's been inspiring to see everyone coming together and especially to work at such a fast pace. We've also had incredible volunteers from the community that have stepped up and are helping with this project. And I just thank you from the bottom of my heart for all of the work that we've, that we've done so far together. We formed two subcommittees and since writing the staff report, we decided to form another one. Sometimes one of the most frustrating things about a project is just scheduling meetings in a timely manner. And I just thank everyone whose names are on here for stepping up and being available, making yourself available, often multiple times each week to have status updates, conversations to get us to the next step. So the pace that we're all moving at is very impressive and it's, it's a joy to work with all of these people. So the concept for this, what I'm going to talk to you about today is still in design. So we very much welcome yours and the community's feedback. I am going to turn it over to Vin in a second to share some of those design concepts. But at a high level, our goal is to provide a Wi-Fi network throughout the neighborhood where students can log in using some sort of a credential like a student ID. And through that, they'll be able to access services related to things like their lesson plans and their schoolwork. We also envisioned that the public would have a sort of limited access to certain critical government services, such as during this time, public health information, signing up for unemployment and food assistance. So a very limited, limited set of services that they, that anyone could access. And so that's that high level vision that we have. And again, it's, it's still in design, so we do welcome feedback on this. And I would like to turn it over to Vin now, who's going to walk through this concept in a little bit more detail.
Thank you, Rebecca. Good evening, Mayor and City Councils. We base our design on two key factors, costs and ease of deployment. The design consists of three routes at location shown as blue dots on the slide. Feeding internet connectivity to 20 access point shown as red dots on the slide. Root location access points are two key ingredients for a mesh network. Each access point has a range of 100 meters or 300 feet. The entire network will be managed by a central controller. Network traffic control can be a combination of filter, unfiltered and partly filtered contents. We consider two user profile in our design, students and community members. Student typically use video streaming for e-learning. They are in the high bandwidth category. While the community members accessing online social services are more for websites and online application, which fall into the low bandwidth category. Using these parameters, we roughly estimate the network can provide internet services for over 500 concurrent users. This depend mostly on student use of video platforms. The network can scale up by adding more access points, root locations and faster internet circuits. Equipment for the project are medium range industry standard outdoor access points. This is the same technology many people have for their home wireless network with a hardened outdoor casing, protective casing. The ideal location to install these devices is on streetlights. They need power and elevation, both of which streetlights provides. Thank you for your time and I return the presentation to Rebecca.
Thank you, Vin. So Vin hinted at this, that we, there will be, we may experience in this initial design some coverage and some bandwidth limitations, but we think it's a good start and that we could scale this over time. In particular, we expect to have coverage issues with some of the larger buildings. For example, apartments fronting the street will likely have good coverage as they'll be closer to the streetlights, but the more interior units won't. So as a next phase, we would like to work with property owners to potentially install additional access points inside buildings or explore other community oriented approaches and options. So again, this design is an initial one. And what's great about it though, is that it can scale as we learn and, and make improvements based on the testing and the feedback that we get. Earlier, I mentioned that we want to form a third subcommittee and this is to work on getting that feedback and also improving the user experience. We've done so much over the past several weeks and it's so important that we all constantly worked in a way to get feedback that informs what we do next. So it's really critical that this group gets out into the community as well as we can, staying six feet away, of course, but asking the right questions of the community so that then as we keep making improvements, it's really informed on, on feedback from members in the Canal Neighborhood. Again, this is very much mid-flight. We came to you quickly to get your feedback. And, and we've made a lot of progress, but there's still a lot of work to be done. We are optimistic that we can continue at this pace in hopes of delivering at least a proof of concept. I'm so optimistic in saying mid-June, but you gotta say it and, and try to, try to get there. We have strong leads on funding and we hope that those can come through so that we can start buying equipment. There is some lead time with the equipment, so we're really looking for some initial funding to make those purchases. And then we can continue looking for funding for, for the other expenses related to the project. To, to install the equipment on the streetlights, we are working with the Marin General Services Agency. Their board is going to consider this at their May 14th meeting. So correction in the staff report, I wrote May 8th. I think that's because I, like many others in the community, have no sense of time or, or what day it is anymore. But sorry for that. It's May 14th. We recommend making a motion tonight to, to allow us to proceed. And I do want to wrap up this evening by reiterating that this is just one of many ways to increase internet access in our community. And it's by no means the end and it's in a lot of ways, I think, the beginning to addressing digital equity in our community. I'm especially excited to continue to work with our partners on affordable wired fiber connections. It's my belief that internet is a utility and access to it is a critical measure of equity in any community. So with that, I would like to open it up for questions. And, and I believe there's a number of our project partners that are also on the line that would like to speak during the public comment time. And so with that, I'll conclude my presentation.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much for your report, the two of you. Outstanding effort to get us to this point. It's really an important, I would suggest, important element for our community, Canal community in particular. Two daughters that are teachers, one a high school teacher, and I know what the challenge this period has been with the closure of school and then trying to continue with the students in a, in a in a fashion such as you're suggesting. And without that, I, I don't know how the students would survive. So it's a challenge certainly. So thank you for bringing this, this to us. And with that, I will, let's see, Vice Mayor Colin, do you have a comment?
I have a question or something you could expand upon. I also want to echo what the mayor just said. I mean, look at all of this. We're on technology right now. So, you know, it is needed throughout our community. So Rebecca, we've received, the council has received letters from individuals in the community concerned about the rollout of 5G-like devices. As we know, this is something that Councilmember McCullough and I were on the subcommittee that helped bring it forward to the council and we spent a lot of time and a lot of public comment around that issue as well. Could you talk about how that interfaces with what we're doing here and what we're discussing tonight?
Sure. So the technology that we are proposing as the solution is not 5G, it's not cellular technology. This is Wi-Fi technology and it's similar to the technology that many people, like many of you right now have in your home that creates a Wi-Fi network. And so it's different technology. The 5G refers to fifth generation cellular technology. Not to be confused in Wi-Fi, Wi-Fi technology, we have a term called 5 gigahertz and it's a different band. So it's a different type of technology and it's, but it can be confusing.
Thank you. Councilmember McCullough.
Yeah. Councilmember Colin or Vice Mayor Colin did allude to the communications that we as a council have received on this subject. And I'm particularly interested to know in reviewing, and I did read every one of the letters and emails. They all appeared to, with perhaps few exceptions, hail from outside of the area. But I'm specifically concerned about the area that we're attempting to serve here if we approve this. Actually, we're not approving anything. We're accepting the report, but if it's in fact it goes, does go through and proof of concept goes to full execution. Those who will be served by this mesh Wi-Fi network, have there been anyone within that community, the Canal community, who has expressed safety concerns about this potential installation?
I have to look and review the letters and, and read the, if there were addresses included. I have not heard of any, but I, I'd have to review the correspondence.
Well, I'll represent to you that none of the addresses rang a bell to me as hailing from the Canal Neighborhood itself. But what about the stakeholders that purport, that is our important stakeholders within the community who represent interests within the Canal area? Canal Alliance being just one example. Have those stakeholders expressed any concerns, safety related concerns about this endeavor?
No, I have not received any.
Okay.
Yeah, I received none either. The same mind, curious about the, that group, but I haven't received no, no complaints from Canal Alliance or any other party within that, that area.
Well, you know, if there are people who are waiting to speak on this subject later on from the public, and I trust that there will be, I just want to say for their benefit, I'm most interested in hearing from people who live within the community and who will be affected directly or indirectly by this installation. And frankly, I'm less interested in hearing the comments to the extent that they repeat what we've received via email and letters from people who live outside this community. Moving ahead, just one other question more substantive here, and that is how will network access be controlled and its purposes be controlled? So we know, for example, that the public side of it, that is the non-student side will be used for government access. The student side, what kind of controls will be in place so that its use will be generally for student research, school, et cetera, and not so much for multiplayer video gaming?
So I'll let Vin speak to that because he's, he can speak to that more technically than I can. But at a high level, what we'll be, we'll be working really closely with the San Rafael City Schools on the design of what can they access and can't they access. They're in the best position to inform that, but from a technical standpoint, Vin, can you speak to that?
Sure. Yeah, that's a great question, Council. What, the, the network design essentially funnel all the traffic from, from the mesh network to a central controller. And that central controller will act as a, a, essentially a traffic controller, just say, can, can this client go to this website? If the controller has a denied list, so you can, then the client will not be able to go proceed any further. So, so that's kind of the high level overview. And the controller would have different profiles. So we would apply, for example, a student type profile where it's, it's based on a larger community, based on, on essentially, it's actually what it is. It's a Cisco Umbrella Service. And, and they have pre-built profile for education or pre-built profile for other aspect of the network traffic. And it's a matter of us just say, okay, we check these boxes to fit the profile of an educational user and the controller will take care of all the filtering for us.
Thank you for that. That's reassuring. Final question, then I'll yield here. You mentioned scalability, Rebecca. I'm curious, not so much about scalability to ensure coverage is adequate for the planned network, but scalability longer term, should this prove to be, and there's funding for this as a more permanent solution to the digital divide that exists within the larger Canal Neighborhood? Is it scalable in that respect as well?
I'm not sure if I understand. Do you mean? Do you mean?
Let, let, right now, of course, that you, you're providing limited access to a segment of the community. If we were able to and if funding existed and the will were there, could this scale up so that, you know, much larger access could be afforded to the community, the, the community that doesn't, can't otherwise afford internet access, broadband internet access?
Yes, it can. We are, the reason we're creating these profiles is again to prioritize bandwidth and to control costs. So once you start to increase the bandwidth that would be needed to, to serve a larger community, you, you'd have higher costs associated to that. So if the money was there, we could definitely expand that. I think at that point, when things start to get more costly, we would start to do more cost benefit analyses to other options. Because again, the, the wired connections to homes, there are barriers, they, these are to, to doing those projects, but they're highly desirable if we can get them done. So they're much more costly and they take a lot more time to implement. But as a longer term solution, it is the direction that I think we need to continue to explore. But yes, this has potential to scale if we can increase the capacity, if we can increase the number of access points in the community, we can definitely scale it to other users. In fact, we've had some conversations with Canal Alliance about creating an opportunity for adult students who are learning English as a second language to be able to use this network. So we're already exploring some of those other use cases that I think would be very doable in what we're planning today. But I do believe it can scale beyond that. I just think there needs to be more cost benefit analysis once you start to increase costs.
Rebecca, thank you and Vin, thank you for your responses.
And then thanks for the excellent questions. Let's turn Let's turn to public. Public comment.
If you are participating by telephone and you wish to speak during public comment, please press star nine. And while I wait for members of the community to press star nine, I will also ask that if you're watching on YouTube, you submit your comments on YouTube. Did you just, did someone just receive a notification that they've been allowed to speak?
Yes. Hi, everybody. This is Sarah Ashton, and I am the Chief Technology Officer for San Rafael City Schools. Thank you very much for this opportunity. And I just want to speak in support of this effort. And first, start off with just expression of gratitude for the city of San Rafael and your effort to stand by us with this shelter in place. So when this occurred, our initial effort was to address the digital divide that you all have spoken about and our students that without access or limited access. And our immediate concern of the further widening of our significant achievement cap that we already have existing in San Rafael City Schools. And while we have made a huge effort to get Chromebooks out to our students and the hotspots or MiFi's, like Rebecca said, we have deployed about two, close to 200 of those. And we have 250 more that we will be deploying. There's still a significant need in this area. And so we're excited to continue to pursue this effort and look at innovative solutions to make sure the students in the Canal area have access to Wi-Fi. So I just wanted to express my support and gratitude for the city of San Rafael and the teams that have been working towards helping our students with access to internet during this time.
Thank you, Sarah. Thanks for all your help on this, too.
Mayor and councilmembers, my name is Javier Trujillo. I manage the Midas Network, and I'm with the County of Marin as the Chief Assistant Director in the IST Department. As a project partner, I support this Canal Wi-Fi project. The times of crisis are when the greater harm is done to the marginalized. And we can not only address the digital divide in the Canal, but we could do it quickly with this project. Not all problems can be solved, but internet access can. This is an opportunity to lead the nation through a public partnership solution and addressing the digital access divide. Thank you.
Thank you, Javier.
Did someone just receive a notification to speak?
3757, are you there?
I'll move on to the next speaker for now.
Yeah.
This is John Reynolds. Do you hear me?
Yes, John.
Yeah, appreciate this. Yeah, I live in the Canal, and of course, there's a digital divide. We understand that. And I'm assuming that many of the people in the Canal really want this. That sounds good. One question I had was, it could be profiled for students within each unit. I don't know whether that's possible. I mean, pay more money, I guess, for Xfinity or AT&amp;T to have Wi-Fi within each individual unit as it needed, but profiled for student use only and later on upscaled for other use. I agree. So why wouldn't it just be each individual unit that would have it? Maybe it's because it's more money that way or other reasons that it can't be just an individual unit. That's my question. And if we have answers to that question, I don't know.
Thank you, John. We'll address the question when the others have had a chance to speak. Next person, please.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Jess Lerner. So first, thank you for acknowledging, for Rebecca Woodbury acknowledging the superiority of wired technology over the risks and harms of wireless, both in the staff report and in tonight's meeting. I am someone who's had my health severely impacted by wireless exposure. I've shared my story with all of you on this council in person before, including how I discovered during college and grad school while studying environmental science that I could not sleep around wireless routers and how I then developed a related autoimmune condition and continue to get sick easily from this. We do have evidence that while people may not all experience the immediacy of feeling it, this type of wireless radiation is a health risk and has many toxic impacts on our lives and our children's lives, as confirmed with the National Toxicology Program and so many, many other resources we've shared with you. As a teacher and as someone who has researched this issue and the evidence thoroughly, I know that children are particularly vulnerable and at risk. Some children have had to be removed from schools with Wi-Fi due to illness from school routers. And exposing any neighborhood involuntarily to blanket Wi-Fi radiation is dangerous, but when a neighborhood is populated with lower-income residents, it's truly an environmental justice issue. Who will be responsible for the health effects on this community in the future? Which health professionals are studying and commenting on this project directly? Will the city be responsible for the harmful health effects? When will be the wired broadband be implemented instead if that's favorable? And would the blanket Wi-Fi be removed? And while, of course, we all agree that the Canal needs equal access to be online fully during this time and in general, there are safer ways to do this, and we've talked about that, like fiber and wired access. I do want to respond to one of the council members saying that comments from outside the Canal shouldn't matter. One thing I've studied is how disempowered communities are often lacking the resources and information to come forward in the public process. Where there is social disempowerment and economic disparity, there is not the same opportunity to learn about this issue. That includes organizations and local groups. How many of you were educated about this issue before the public showed up to object to 5G? So this is something the wireless industry has successfully hidden and continues to do so. Therefore, it doesn't make sense to assume the communities in the Canal would have all the detailed information about this hidden danger and be able to offer truly informed consent. Therefore, saying only those comments matter is really missing a critical point, and forced exposure without consent is not acceptable. This should be a safe and personal choice, like having your own wireless router if you want one, for all residents. So I encourage you to say no to this project. Thank you.
Jess, if I could, do you live in San Rafael?
I live in Fairfax.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Omar Correa, CEO of Canal Alliance. I hope you and your family are well and healthy during these complicated times. COVID-19 has exposed the inequities that existed in our community for a long time. Reliable access to the internet is one of them. A problem that disproportionately affects low-income communities. As distance learning was adopted, the negative impact on low-income students has increased significantly, despite the great efforts made by the school district to solve this problem. Students who lack of online access cannot complete homework and other school-related activities. We call this problem the homework gap, a crisis within the crisis. Before COVID-19, some students were able to access the internet in libraries, community centers, nonprofits. But the shelter-in-place order and the new health protocols, such as social distancing, have made this option less viable for them. This is the time to implement short-term solutions that serve as the foundation for building a more equitable system in the community. The Canal Wi-Fi is a project with multiple benefits, including, but not limited to, public health, public safety, education, and economic development. Canal Alliance will support this project in multiple ways. Provide access to a residential building for the installation of the necessary equipment for this project. Support the community education campaign. Invest in the project and partner with the city staff to secure the resources needed to make this project a reality. I want to publicly thank the efforts of the city staff and the volunteers who have worked on this project despite the current conditions and limitations. I hope you all support this project tonight and continue working together for the common good. Thank you.
Thanks, Omar. Thanks for your comment. It means a lot to us. Next, please.
Hi, Mayor, hi, councilmembers. Thank you so much for giving me a chance to comment. My name is Jay Grunkie, and I'm a parent in San Rafael. And we have, is in our family, an experience that touches on this issue. When my 11-year-old son began online learning, he developed headache, fatigue, and brain fog. And luckily, I was able to identify what was going on and switch his computer from Wi-Fi to Ethernet and turn our home Wi-Fi off. And his symptoms disappeared, and now he's able to participate in online learning with no problems. But had I not been able to make that switch, had I not had the control to make that choice, his access to online learning wouldn't have meant anything because he felt too ill to participate. So I'm grateful that I had that, have that control. And, you know, I'm also grateful that we can participate in online learning. So, you know, giving families in the Canal neighborhood internet access is critical. And I'm in support of the efforts to do that, but so is doing it safely without inflicting unavoidable health problems on people who will have no ability to control their exposure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jen. Next, please.
Hi, it's Kaia Bozzi. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much. I was so deeply touched by the beginning of your meeting and how you all worked together as a community. Yeah, it was great. So I live in Forest Knolls, and the reason I'm speaking is I do electromagnetic field radiation analysis and mitigation in the Bay Area, and I studied with one of the top engineers in the US. And so what I heard you say is the goal is really to connect students and families and that the internet access can be achieved two different ways, basically wired or wireless. And so my question is, why was this community chosen, one of the least educated populations in Marin, in one of the most densely populated areas in Marin? And I, because everyone I know in the Canal District, they all have internet. And I'm sure that there's families that don't. But it would seem like because it's so densely populated, that it would be really behooves to do the wired connections. So I wanted to read just a couple of things that come from April 1972, a document from the United States Naval Medical Research Institute on wireless. And I know many of you know this, but I want to reiterate it. This is the information that comes from, directly from that report. Altered fetal development, depression, impotence, anxiety, lack of concentration, dizziness, hallucinations, sleeplessness, insomnia, increased irritability, decreased appetite, increased fatigueability, chest pains, myocardial necrosis, loss of anatomical parts, dehydration, altered rate of calcification of certain tissues. And it goes on and on. I was directly impacted myself, which is why I ended up finally studying with an engineer so I could figure out what was actually real and not real. Because there's so much going on in this field that's not true. But if the goal is to connect people, let's connect them, but let's make sure it's safe. There's no research that's been done by the government. They said they refused to do any research on it, which is curious. And corporations are blocking communities from being able to oppose different wireless communication systems that are being set up, which is curious, too. And so I would just ask you to really consider the health of the family and my friends to, in that area, to really consider doing wired technology. It's safe. It's far, far more difficult to hack. It's inexpensive. And the children can use it anywhere in the house. So thank you so much for your time and your consideration.
And thank you, excuse me, thank you for your input. Next person, please.
Hello?
Hello?
I'm not sure if you're hearing me or somebody else.
No, we can hear you fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm in. All right. Okay, here I am. My name is Jody Nelson, and I'm the Director of East Bay Neighborhoods for Responsible Technology. I'm all for expanding broadband and connecting children to the internet so they can continue learning during this shelter-in-place and continue being connected in the future. But there's a dark side to these hotspots, and the industry doesn't want you to know. This technology emits radiation, and all the fine print on all of your devices states that we should distance ourselves from the device. But the real question you should be asking yourself is, what is the cumulative radiation our children are exposed to, not just the one device or one hotspot? My doctor advised me years ago to turn off my Wi-Fi at night, and I resisted for a long time. And I finally made the decision to turn it off at night. Almost immediately, I began to sleep better, had more energy, and my headaches began to diminish. With a little digging, I found that there were thousands of independent scientific studies showing how 2.4 gigahertz causes and contributes to health issues. World War II personnel in the 1940s working around radar equipment and firefighters in the 1990s exposed to close-proximity 2G and 3G towers experienced the same symptoms: fatigue, headaches, sleep disruption, cognitive issues. You know what they have in common? They were exposed to frequencies that are part of the microwave spectrum. Hotspots are a part of this spectrum. Fiber optics would eliminate all the dark sides of wireless broadband. We have been funding this private endeavor for decades, and guess what? Recently, a court ruled that the old FCC accounting rules that governed how states interacted with telecom no longer applied, and the states were free to pursue legal channels to recover billions of dollars. These hotspots may be a quick fix, but they only add to the cumulative radiation. You finally have a way to push back telecom's agenda for wireless dependence and telling the Goliath bully, no. You have all the power, and I hope you use it wisely. Thank you.
And thanks, Jody. Anyone else?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I just wanted to clarify, I get two minutes to speak. Is that correct?
Say again?
Okay, thank you. My name is Lauren Derimer. I'm not a San Rafael resident. I'm 35 years old. I grew up in Marin County in Sausalito. But I do spend a lot of time in the Canal District, and I'm a sailor and a kayak guide. So it's obviously really important to me because to me, community is a little bit relative because it includes the entire county. I'm sitting on this call because I personally have a very strong connection to this topic. In 2018, I lost both my 11-year-old cousin and my boyfriend to brain cancers. My boyfriend had a glioblastoma that grew in three months. And it was basically, I mean, there's a lot going on on this topic. But what I do know is that I recently found a huge electromagnetic leak from a battery charger in his living space where he lived for 25 years. It's also the source of where his router was, his Wi-Fi router. I also can attest that he has had multiple seizures when he was sick in that same spot, which I find fascinating. In addition to this, my little cousin lives in Palo Alto in Silicon Valley and lives and went to school amongst 48 cellphone towers. So I know I don't have a lot to talk on this subject, but I really want to oppose any additional unnecessary Wi-Fi in our county. I think fiber optics are definitely the way to go. I think it's, I'm very grateful to you guys for everything you're trying to do for the schools. But there's got to be a way to either do this with socially distant spaces, like in libraries or community centers with hardwired fiber, either, yeah, schools, libraries, or community centers or something like that, or a way where they can download their homework in advance, complete it, and then perhaps submit it via a personal hotspot briefly as opposed to having it on all day long. Anyway, I just, thank you so much for letting me speak. I just wanted to put that in.
And thank you for your comments.
Yeah, no problem.
Hello, am I on the air here?
Yes, you are. Thank you.
Okay, good. My name is Andy Perry. Good evening, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to make comments tonight. I wanted to share that I'm feeling a sense of being deeply troubled by this effort moving forward, especially in light of the extensive meetings that took place during the time that we were working on the San Rafael Wireless Ordinance last year. As you all recall, you had standing-room meetings, standing-room-only meetings there. One of the things that was submitted to you, in fact, all of us together watched one particular video of Sharon Goldberg, a medical doctor. We submitted to you some of her medical abstracts. These are peer-reviewed medical abstracts and scientific literature showing a wide range of adverse biological and health effects from these technologies. Someone made the comment, this is Wi-Fi, not cellular. One is not worse than the other. There's research on both, and all of them are showing significant health impacts and biological impacts, both at the cellular level, subcellular level, within various systems. level, within various systems of, uh, humans and other biological communities, insects and birds and plants. Um, the Canal has a large number of economically disadvantaged community members living there and I, I fully recognize and support the need for internet access there. And as been said so many times, uh, in public comment, um, having wired solutions, fiber solutions is the way to go. And gigahertz electromagnetic radiation frequency from wifi sets a danger, a dangerous precedent and is putting people at risk. So, there's a short-term solution of gaining access and a long-term solution of making people sick and I don't think the trade-off is actually worth it. Um, I also wanted to comment that many of the people living in the Canal, as Jess Lerner said, many of the people living in the Canal, uh, who are, the ones that are actually paying rent, don't even speak English, they speak Spanish as their first language and as Jess said, they don't have access to the kind of information. So, I'm very concerned, um, Andrew, your comment that you'll, uh, give a lot of preference to the comments coming from the Canal when there's a lot of people, uh, from the Canal that aren't even on this call because they don't even know any of this is going on, much less anything about the adverse, uh, potential adverse health effects from this technology. So, I wanted to share those comments with you and I hope that you will move forward and try to figure out ways of doing this in a way that both provides the technology, which I am a technology guy, I fully support, and, uh, minimizes the adverse health effects for this, uh, wonderful community of the Canal. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Andy, nice to hear from you.
Good evening, hello, do you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, this is Vicki Severs, EMF Safety Network. First, thank you and, thank you and all city employees for the exemplary service and communication to San Rafael residents during these hard times. An additional thanks to Jim and Rebecca for communication about this wifi project. Clearly, staff members know that wired telecommunications systems are highly desirable and you're hearing that adding new wireless radiation emitting devices inside and outside apartments is not healthful for Canal families. The action poses an environmental justice issue also, as I think you're hearing, since families elsewhere have the option of using ethernet or turning wifi off when not in use. Even a short-term solution can be wired, at least for some, by offering in-home wired modems and partnering with an internet provider. Some libraries in other places keep internet access wired because it is safer, faster, and more secure than wireless. Please exhaust all wired options. With respect to the future, may I echo Jody Nelson's remarks about a, uh, federal decision allowing states and municipalities to recoup funds from telecom companies. This is a, a March DC Court of Appeals decision. The cities and states can recoup funds that were supposed to be used to build out a national fiber optic network. Customers have paid billions in miscellaneous service fees and rate increases on landline phone bills to finance a promised fiber network. However, funds were diverted to wireless expansion in a large, decades-long accounting scandal. Cities and states, as Jody said, are now freed from the FCC to go after this money to help solve the digital divide, lower prices, and pursue municipal fiber. The lawyers who achieved this win are working to bring new municipality and state action soon, over the next two months. Please urge city attorneys to investigate this opportunity. Thank you.
Hello, this is Rachel Gaunt. Can you hear me? Hello, can you, can you hear me? This is Rachel Gaunt speaking.
I can hear you, Rachel.
Thank you so much. Um, thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak. It feels very much like we're talking about, um, two opposite things. Access to people for the internet, critical for all people, especially during this shelter-in-time-place, and choice. And by that, I mean, choice to say yes or no to what's beamed into your house and how you run your house inside your house. What I think we're doing is trading one off for the other. Right now, the importance of getting all kids up and running on the, on the internet seems, is a really great thing, we're all for that. But what, by doing this mesh network, what we're doing is we're actually taking away individuals' choices within the Canal community to, to do the internet safely if, if they want by an ethernet cord with a modem and/or, most importantly, to turn the wifi off at night. I'm somebody also who has, um, who has to really be careful about how much wireless radiation I am around and sleep is an increasingly important piece. It seems like you've tried really some good ideas about hotspots and putting stuff in libraries and I can see how hard you're trying to make this work. And I wonder if, as part of your ideas, you looked into supplying people who already have cable TV, and I imagine that a number of homes have TV but not internet, to simply give them a modem and then offer them the choice, they can either safely wire in with a simple two-dollar ethernet cable, or they can have wireless within their home. Understanding that the amount of wireless in their home, um, I don't know for a fact, but it seems like it'd be much less than blasting the, you know, the whole neighborhood and they can then unplug it at night if they want. I think the environmental justice issue has been talked about many times, but it is, um, you know, just too bad that, that, that people in, in neighborhoods who are already exposed to more environmental toxins yet again may be exposed to more than they bargained for. Um, thank you so much for exhausting all possibilities first and, um, and thank you and good evening. Bye-bye.
Thank you for your call, Rachel. Hello?
Oh, hi, hi. Um, my name is Gabby Farias, I'm actually, uh, an employee of the City of San Rafael and I just wanted to, um, express my support for this project. Um, I was involved a long time ago in some initial efforts and just trying to figure out how to even get something, um, going for this community that has been in need for a very long time of connectivity. The, right now, it sounds like there's a lot of people concerned with, you know, health issues and probably maybe valid or so, but we need to get something going, we need to get something going now. The divide, the educational divide is only getting, um, greater, especially now with everything that's going on. And I believe that the community down there is in favor of this project and if there is an effort to get more support from them, I would be willing to participate in that so that we can, um, keep this moving forward. I just wanted to express my support and thank the council members today for hearing this out and hopefully it keeps going. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gabby.
Hi, this is Catherine Dodd, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I, um, represent the Alliance of Nurses for Healthy Environments, who are public health experts across the country. And I want to associate myself with the remarks of, I think her name was Jess Lerner at the beginning, um, who very articulately talked about environmental justice and how unfortunately not everyone realizes this is an issue until someone gets sick. Um, I want to thank very much Rebecca, uh, for, and, and all of you for being committed to bringing broadband wired connections, uh, to everyone, to all residents of the neighborhoods throughout, uh, San Rafael. Um, I really, uh, the, children absorb two to five times the amount of RFR because their skulls are thinner, their brains and bodies have higher concentration of water, um, their reproductive systems are not developed. And our short-term research, if, exposure reveals ADHD, poor concentration, limited working memory, sleep disorders, and behavior changes. What does our long-term research show? We don't have long-term research on this exposure. So, I would equip, equip, uh, make an analogous, um, example of accepting an offer to cheat, to paint all of the older buildings in the Canal neighborhood with leaded paint, um, which will then expose children over time to poisonous lead chips and dust. Now, we didn't know the hazards of lead paint years ago and children's and families have suffered ever since. And so, I want to ask you to please not expose kids to RFR over time and then find out the long-term effects years from now. I hope that you, if you consider this, it will be a temporary solution and that there will be no expansion. If there is an expansion, it has to be access to, not, to the internet, not access to wifi. Um, as was said, the transmission is a twenty-four-seven exposure to radiation. There are instructions that we can give you in English and Spanish of how to decrease the radiation for hotspots and nodes, um, during this interim. And I hope you'll distribute these with instructions in English and Spanish. Thank you.
And thank you, Catherine.
Hi, um, my name is Valerie Hood and I really thank you for this chance to comment on this issue. Um, Israel, a very technologically advanced country, recently, uh, made the decision to actually remove wifi from many schools because they did, uh, find that there were adverse health effects on young children. So, those studies are very easy to find. Um, also, do you have a baseline of health and wellness for this community where this experiment of a very high level of wifi will be conducted? Do you plan to have healthcare providers contact the community to see if they begin to experience a change in their health due to this experience, experiment? Um, how many residents in the Canal were contacted about this issue and how were they contacted? Um, has there been an environmental impact report done on this as the, uh, as to the wi, uh, fire danger? And also to the uninsured streetlights? I'm assuming that this might be, uh, similar, you have, I don't know what kind of, uh, impacts you've seen on this, um, in terms of the wifi nodes, and I don't know how it, uh, compares to cell towers. I, I really do understand how important it is that kids be able to, um, communicate this time with their schools. Uh, this is a horrible thing, but I just wanted to tell you really briefly, I had an experience, I went to the, uh, Pickleweed Park, um, a little twenty, was called, uh, Bay Area twenty-fifty. And they were, they said that they went there to contact parents because they, they didn't really know how to outreach to Canal parents. So, they went through a whole song and dance about sea level rise and all these other things and then they asked the parents what their concerns were and they said, "High crime, we live too densely, we don't know if we're gonna be working next week, and we don't know where we're gonna get our next meal." It's really hard for me to believe that the idea of connecting on wireless in a community where we know that people can't even go to work is actually illegal for many people to go to work. I, I, it's really hard for me to believe that their main concern is gonna be about wireless connectivity. I, I just don't know if anyone has actually spoken to the community about this and I, I really appreciate your time so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie.
If there's anyone else on the telephone who wishes to spleat, to speak, please press star nine and I'll give you a moment. Seeing no other comments by telephone, I will move to our YouTube comments or comments that were submitted by email during the meeting. The first is from Diane Cotry. Dear council members, thank you for recognizing both the health and educational welfare of the children in your care. Please consider that wireless radiation expansion has been vehemently opposed in Centerfield by health professionals and, and by many citizens who have attested to adverse health effects from the current levels of wireless radiation. The studies on wireless effects on children's health and learning ability are documented locally and around the world. The expansion of wireless in the Canal area, even temporarily, may pose a long-term health risk for many in this dense, multi-generational community. Is a few months of online education worth the risk of a child's long-term cognitive impairment? Please ask yourself if you would implement such a risky plan if it were your child, your family. Thank you. Linda Bronner, PhD. Dear Centerfield City Council members, thank you for recognizing that the welfare of our community members, including our children, is of utmost importance and that it is our responsibility to protect them from technology which will literally heat, heat human flesh. There are thousands of scientifically sound research studies which support the conclusion that placing wireless radiation inside and outside of homes adds to the already unregulated exposure to this unknown carcinogen. Wireless radiation is associated with inflammation at cellular level precipitating a plethora of chronic and deleterious diseases, heart disease, autoimmune disease, Parkinson's, cancer of all sorts, broken DNA, to name a few. Please protect our children and those adults who inhabit our community as well. Thank you for making the safe choice in this attempt to blanket our community with yet another exposure to wireless radiation. Respectfully submitted. Steve Glanz here. Please reject the Canal wifi report. EMF is, is an evidence-based biohazard. Wired is better. Accepting the report would contradict Centerfield's 5G initiative. SR can make a difference. My name is Shandu Vias, we have been living in Centerfield for thirty-five years. I am very sensitive to wireless technology, there is an electric pole next, next to our home. If they install 5G antenna on this pole, that would devastate my health and make my life miserable and no place to go. Please stop installing 5G antennas on Centerfield neighborhood electric poles, thank you. Cindy Vias, I'm a former teacher and Centerfield resident for thirty-three years. Thank you for recognizing that wired connectivity is the healthiest solution for assisting students in gaining internet access. I commend you for recognizing the need for e-learning access for all students, but you plan to install wireless connections close to homes rather than the healthier wired connections. I'm extremely concerned about adverse health effects on the very students you want to help. The health risks of accumulated exposure to wireless radiation have been well documented. Will the city be liable for health injuries to the children and the public once these new networks are installed? My name is Bruce Vogon from Center, San Salmo. The council should be sensitive to the county's historic lack of transparency on broadband matters and be as open with the public as possible. Comcast Internet Essentials Low Income Program was supposed to help solve the digital equity problems in communities just like the Canal. Why did the program fail? The public needs to know why. Name withheld. Enable tech, protect health. Yes to high-quality fiber broadband. Wired is far superior, safer, faster, more secure. Please make this a very short-term solution and turn off at night. Give me one moment. Looks like that does conclude public comments. Just for one moment, I'm getting a note that someone's trying to either press star nine and wasn't able to let us, wasn't notifying us, so I'm just going to quickly allow the two telephone numbers that haven't spoke yet to speak if they have comments.
Yes, I would like to speak. Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you, you will want to pause your YouTube videos so you, we don't get stuck in the feedback loop.
Yes, alright, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Alright, great. Hi, uh, my name is Janet Fitzgerald. I live in Fairfax, but I do visit the Canal area and I'm also a, um, I'm a speech-language pathologist and I could be working with any of the children down in that area. So, um, I'm also a mother and I'm a cancer survivor, so I have many different views and I've also worked in healthcare PR, so I have that view as well, knowing how healthcare PR works. Um, and I know that there's a huge PR effort that is pushing five, uh, that is pushing the, uh, these technologies that have not been proven safe. Uh, people are worried and they have great concerns and they need to be addressed. So, are you able to absolutely assure everybody in the Canal area that you have bona fide proof, no one will be harmed? And I don't think that is the case because there are studies proving that there will be harm. Uh, you know they exist, they've been presented to you and we have to think about lawsuits. Wow, who's gonna pay for those? So, that's one concern, not to mention that little children's brains are far more susceptible to the radiation than our adult brains. I've worked with kids with brain tumors, I've worked with adults with brain tumors, this is a major concern. I, I've worked with them as a speech pathologist. Um, so I have an interesting background that, that spans healthcare PR and speech pathology, uh, that allows me to see this in a very different way than maybe, uh, some other people. And I know there's a very strong PR effort- And I know there's a very strong PR effort that goes into these technologies that you are going to be experimenting with, and it is an experiment. There is nothing to prove it safe, and our children don't deserve it, especially some of the population that don't speak English as well as those of you on this, sitting before us tonight. We need to think about those people. They deserve a fair shot. So I'd like to put a word in for them, for anyone who's had cancer, anyone who is EMF, bona fide EMF-sensitive, and for all citizens who don't deserve to be exposed 24/7 to powerful microwave radiation. It's just not necessary. There's other ways, and you've heard them. But we also know there's a very strong lobby, the strongest, the largest industry in the world, telecom, right? So we're up against them, but it's time to listen to, quote, "the little people." That's the rest of us, the citizens. We're not powerful like telecom, but we are your citizens, and we would like our children to be healthy. Cancer is on the rise. We don't need any more. Who's going to pay for it? Who's going to pay for the lawsuits? We have to address all these issues. Our children deserve us to take care of them. Are we going to with this technology? Can you absolutely prove it is safe? We know the answer is no. We know that there are scientists who have studied and proven this, and I'm not going to go into naming them all. There are so many more articulate people who have done so tonight. I hope you will listen to them. I'm speaking up as a, as a, someone who visits the area, as someone who's been in healthcare for decades, and for someone who cares about those who may not be able to understand English, who haven't been presented with all this information. We also know, by the way, that most of our media is owned by telecom. FYI, most people don't know that. Owned by telecom. So are your citizens receiving all the information they should about it through the screening of the telecom-owned media? Probably not.
Would you please wrap it up?
All right. I'd like you to please give a pause to this idea, think of the children who are going to be harmed, think of the cancer, think of the cost and the lawsuits.
Janet, your comments.
You're so welcome. Thank you for considering the health of all of our citizens.
Of course.
And that concludes public comments.
Okay, we'll close public. We had quite a few comments. And I've got some questions. I suspect we all do, but perhaps if it makes sense to you, Rebecca, you can address some of the concerns that you heard.
Sure. I did take a few notes as certain questions arose. John Reynolds asked a question about individual units. I'm not sure if I completely understand, but John, I can touch base with you after the meeting. This is a different network than, I think, one that would go to individual units, but there are interesting programs, and when we talk about how this could potentially scale, we could be, we could work with property owners to install equipment within buildings that would reach individual units better. But this is a different type of program than I think that you get when you have wired connections to individual units, which is another great program, but it's a longer-term program that would take a bit more effort than what we're considering today. I also wanted to clarify, I think, my comments in the staff report about wired connections being superior, I was making those comments from a connectivity standpoint. I'm not making comments on the health standpoint of anything. I just want to clarify that I was making those comments from a bandwidth and connectivity standpoint. Also, there were a couple comments, you know, "Once we established more wired connections in the community, would this network continue?" I think that's something that we would have to evaluate at the time. I think that over time, as we improve the digital equities in the community, we should be constantly evaluating all of our efforts and seeing which ones work, which ones don't. There could, there could arise a time where we have better solutions than this, and at that point, you would do a cost-benefit analysis of, does it make sense to continue to fund a network that is maybe used less over time because other preferred options have been made available? I would, I'd very much support a data-driven approach to what solutions work at what point, and based on the information that we have, the feedback that we get from the community on their preferred solutions. And we'd have to look at the affordability of things and then the quality of different things. So I think over time, we should constantly be evaluating what we continue to fund and implement. A question was asked about why the canal. It was, we, we are working on the canal, in the canal with this project because when you look at San Rafael, we do have the lowest broadband adoption rates in the canal neighborhood compared to any other neighborhood, and there's a high concentration of need for internet connectivity. So we saw the ability to have an impact in a small area. And so this type of solution works well in an area like this. So that's why we chose the canal to do this project. I think different things work well in different places, geographically as well as demographically in terms of the adoption rates that we see. But that's why we selected the canal. I was, very piqued my interest when the comment about getting money from the FCC for municipal fiber. I'm going to Google that tonight because I absolut, that sounds intriguing, and like municipal fiber, I want to see county-wide fiber. And so that would be a great, great thing to pursue, and I will. Providing modems and ethernet cables to households is an intriguing idea, and we can look into that. Again, I think that this, this challenge takes a lot of different solutions, and so I'm open, open to looking into a project like that. I hadn't heard of a program like that before, but we can look into that. And then another question was raised about hearing from people in the canal itself, and I just want to stress that's the importance of this collaborative effort. Working with the Centerfell City Schools and Canal Alliance is incredibly important for us. I consider many of their efforts to be kind of the boots-on-the-ground efforts. They are talking with families every day about the needs that exist in that community, and so that's why they are just such critical partners to this. And I really, I really appreciate their partnership on this and how they can inform what the community needs are based on their experience out in the community. So I think I captured most of the questions that I could answer that were.
I think you did too, and maybe I can just touch on a couple. But I'd start, like to start with perhaps the bottom-line summary. That is, did you hear anything tonight that would alter your recommendation with regard to the motion before us?
No. No.
Okay. Two, a couple of practical considerations. This thing has, has been dropped upon our community rather abruptly, and you've responded, I think, remarkably. I'm interested in, just generally speaking, time cost, first of all, with regard to providing the service to the students in the area. How do those compare with the, that proposed and perhaps alternatives?
Are, just to clarify, are you asking about this project compared to other types of?
Yes.
To address the issue? So in terms of cost, it's, this is, I would say, relatively inexpensive compared to, for example, a municipal broadband, a community broadband solution. Efforts like that are very admirable, and I think there's a lot of energy to work on that at a, not even just a citywide level, but at a countywide level, which is really exciting. But though, but an effort like that will take many years and millions of dollars, but I believe that it's possible in this community. This is something that we can do fairly quickly, and again, fairly inexpensively. So it's, it's something that if, if someone were to hand us a $130,000 check tomorrow, we could start purchasing equipment, and we could have this stood up in about a month and a half, which is really quick. And so that's what makes this project so attractive to us. There are other efforts underway, especially, I think, High Impact, which is to provide hotspots to families. So these are like little mini personal hotspots that can create a wifi network in someone's home, and those are also very effective. They do, they are costly as well, especially if you want to provide them to families long-term. There's like a monthly bill that you have to pay for those. And so those can add up very fast, especially when you look at the need and getting them into, and also the logistics of getting them into the hands of people who are in need. Another aspect of this project that is attractive is the low barrier to the access. Some of the challenges that we've had with some of the wired commercial programs is there can be barriers to access. There can be eligibility requirements with people signing up, and there can be challenges in, in homes based on who's the leaseholder, what, what services are available in certain apartment buildings. Not all apartment buildings offer all of the choices that are available in the marketplace. And so there are some challenges to that. This broadband network would have very low barrier to entry, so that's another aspect that makes it attractive to us.
So are there, are there any of the alternatives that perhaps were suggested, one in particular, but any alternatives that were suggested this evening? As a practical matter, addressing the issue that you're attempting to, that is, the students without classroom opportunities at this point, any alternatives that would substitute in the timeframe that we're faced with, weaving primarily the community, including the educators that we heard from, including many of the residents that we heard from, Omar, for example, that could be substituted, or would it be not possible, considering the time and the cost that we have presented?
I believe that this effort, in addition to all the other things that we are doing, promoting the low-cost internet options and encouraging signing up for those, getting hotspots into the hands of as many people as possible, I think that this in conjunction to those is a great approach. I don't think that doing any one of these things solves the issue. I think we have to, to work on all of these things. And again, I'll be repeating myself, but a larger-scale community broadband initiative is highly desirable. We would not be able to do that in a short period of time unless, I don't know what it would take.
Well, it doesn't sound like it's possible. I mean, let's get real. And if it's not, then we have limited, if any, alternatives to address the issue that you're attempting to, which I applaud you for doing so. Finally, the word "experiment" was used by several individuals, and so I'm curious as to whether or not there's any accepted conclusions with regard to health factors, negative factors with regard to the system you're proposing.
I can't, I, I'm not aware. I can't speak to the health impacts.
Have we considered that? I mean, we are talking about the kids in a particular area, so health has to be a consideration.
Yeah, the consideration that I think about is that this is the same technology that exists around us today, and so if that's acceptable to us, that's something that I would offer. This is the type of technology that many people have in their homes. We did hear from people tonight that some of this technology is, is a technology that some people choose to not have in their homes or turn off at night, but that's, it exists around us, it's in coffee shops, it's in businesses, so that would be my comments about the technology.
Okay, well, thank you for responding to those. Other questions? Anyone? John, Councilmember Gamble?
Yeah, Rebecca, and I could be off on this, but I just, while people were speaking, I was looking, I believe the only fiber provider in the county is AT&amp;T at this point, and most of the county is not wired, and I took the chance to just do a quick search for a random address in the middle of the canal, and it's not available at this time. And so, am I right on that? That there is not currently fiber capability in that neighborhood right now? It's not like that we can just, you know, turn it on there and have access points to it?
My understanding is that there is fiber running through that neighborhood. Whether it's commercially available, I'd have to look into that. And, and, but it's a little more complex than whether it exists there. It's whether the wiring exists in the buildings and whether the buildings allow for those services in them. So oftentimes, when you move into an apartment building and you're a renter, if you want internet service, sometimes there's only one option you don't get to choose. So that's one of the challenges that we've seen, for example, with a Comcast and Internet Essentials program, which is a great affordable program, but if your building is not wired to allow for Comcast service, you can't participate in that. So again, I think that there is fiber in the neighborhood, and the work to make that accessible and affordable for people is, I think, a bigger and very worthy project to explore, but it's a longer-term option.
Thank you. Anyone else? Before asking for a motion, I'll want to check in with the city attorney. Mr. City Attorney, any comments with regard to this matter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing to add to Rebecca's comments that she just provided.
Thank you, thank you. Any comments before we go to motion?
Yeah, so Mayor, if I might. I participated in a call with Rebecca as well as Sarah, who gave public testimony. I'm trying to remember who else was on the call, but it was folks that are uniquely positioned to see the need that is in the canal neighborhood. And as I was hearing the public testimony, and I do thank the public that took the time to call in, we know it's a little unwieldy to call in through Facebook Live or through Zoom, and so we appreciate people taking the time to do that. It really reminded me of the conversations we had when we developed our wireless, we updated our wireless technology ordinance, and some of the information that was provided, I still continue to believe the advocacy needs to happen at the federal level, it needs to happen with the Telecommunications Act that is regulating some of this. So I think we've done a really good job of balancing what the city can legally do. And then the other part about this is I value equity. I value equity in our community, and when Omar Carrera comes on the line and says, "This is an issue of equity," I don't live in the canal, and many of the speakers that came in also don't, and that concerns me. I think having people outside saying, "This is what you should be doing, this is what's good for you," that strikes me, it makes me uncomfortable. Let's leave it at that. And so I would propose to the people that called in that have the concerns to build your own relationships and conversations with the community members. And so when you talk about the education part, or you talk about the, having informed consent or whatever you feel the knowledge gap is, that those conversations, the people calling in can start to spearhead those conversations. I would welcome that. I would welcome the community building that would go along with that. I think for the city, we are balancing it really well, the need that we heard loud and clearly from the school folks. These kids are getting left way behind. So, and the last thing I'll say is Rebecca is right. This is a layered approach, right? This is one part of, this isn't like, "We're done, okay, we put these hotspots in and we're walking away. We're going to continue to try to bring the students and the families along in that area." So this is a complex issue, and I really have to tip my hat to Rebecca, who moved heaven and earth to get these kids online so they are not left even farther behind than their peers in the near term.
Good point, thank you. Councilmember McCullough, do you have a comment?
Well, you know, I think Vice Mayor Collins said it better than I possibly can, but I'm going to be a little blunt, perhaps, and a little impolitic too, but I find it insufferably arrogant when people who live outside the community suggest that the community that's most affected by what's in front of us is too uninformed and too ignorant to speak on their own behalf. I heard that from several speakers, and I find it very, very, very disappointing. I think that perhaps... I think that perhaps, to Councilmember or Vice Mayor Collins' point, if folks from outside the community who have sincere convictions on this issue feel so strongly about them, they should engage with people within the community rather than purport to speak for them. There's a level of arrogance and privilege there that deeply concerns me.
And, uh, thank you for your comment. Uh, Jim, do you have, uh, you have something you wish to, uh, address?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to bring up a point and ask Rebecca and the city attorney to jump in, uh, if I don't have it quite right. But I just wanted to offer, should the council wish to accept the report tonight and keep staff, uh, working with our partners on this particular path, uh, the action before you is just to accept the informational report. Uh, we'd also like you to, um, direct staff to execute, uh, the license agreement with MGSA, and I'll talk about that really briefly. Rebecca mentions that MGSA, the Marin General Services Authority, is the organization that owns the streetlights, uh, throughout Marin. And they, as she mentioned, it's on their agenda to authorize the use of the streetlights. Uh, we just wanna do a license agreement with them that says the city of San Rafael is okay with you using the streetlights that are in our jurisdiction, uh, for this purpose. Uh, it's something that the city manager has the authority to do, but since we're talking about this topic under an informational item, uh, you're allowed to provide me with direction. So if you wanted, if there is a motion to this effect, it would be great if the motion included, um, directing the city manager to execute the license agreement with MG, MGSA. I just wanna check in with the city attorney and make sure that that's acceptable.
Uh, thank you, Jim. Uh, Rob, comment?
Yes, uh, we had some, uh, discussion about that before the meeting, and what, um, we would be suggesting is a motion that would be along the lines of accepting the report and authorizing the city manager to execute a license agreement, uh, as necessary with MGSA for use of, uh, streetlights for the project.
I, I appreciate that, but I'm gonna ask for clarification. Your, your comment was clear, but I have a note, so maybe you can help me understand 'cause I don't wanna make a mistake. Uh, the note is, I'm not sure who provided it, but nevertheless, it is, "Just accept the report, no need for motion, re, MGSA." Now...
No, I can offer, um, we, we had multiple conversations today, and a, a final conversation that we had with Lisa and Lindsay, um, was that it, uh, Lisa felt it wasn't necessary in the motion because, um, the city manager has the authority. So, uh, we ran, we were running on, um, little time, and I think we failed to circle back with that communication.
And I would, I would say, even though it's not mandatory, I know that the city manager has the authority. I, I'd appreciate it if, if the maker of the motion included it, uh, should, should you decide to go in this direction.
Thank you, and, uh, I would, uh, I would encourage, uh, that inclusion as well, based on what I've heard from the city attorney and yourself. So unless there's, uh, Councilmember Bushy, sorry.
I'm, um, awaiting your indication that you're, that you're ready for a motion.
You've got it.
I, I would like to prove that we accept the informational report and authorize the city manager to sign the contract, the license agreement.
Thank, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moving to second roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Collins?
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Mayor Phillips?
By Matter, Currys, five zero. Thank you, everyone. Um, we'll turn now to, uh, final councilmembers' reports, request for future agenda items. Anyone?
So ju- just quickly, we had the first, uh, MCCMC cross-jurisdictional meeting on the economic recovery. Uh, every single city in town had a representative that showed up, and, uh, we'll keep you posted. It's really a clearinghouse for ideas, and there were a bunch that were already put forward, um, about, uh, it's all having to do with, obviously, the COVID impact. Um, but we're off and running, and I will keep you posted as to, uh, how that proceeds. And we are working, uh, with the Board of Supervisors. Uh, Jim, um, Schutz had mentioned in the beginning about receiving feedback at the Board of Supervisors, uh, Trade Industry Committee, and I can't remember the name of it. Uh, but we are represented through the MCCMC. Myself and Brian Colbert will be on that task force. So, um, we will keep the information going. So it's silent.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, anyone else? It doesn't appear. And therefore, we'll go to San Rafael Superior Agency, of which there is none. Therefore, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.